Hi Wendy, welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. So how many of us do we need? You need four for a quorum.
Yeah, we need one more.
Okay, that's right, one more. And if all we accomplish is the public hearing, that's, that's a win as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we know there's two that aren't coming, so there's, there's two others that we don't know.
Correct. Neither of you got water, any kind of water, overland flow or groundwater from the flood? Heroes? I don't know, I didn't change anything. Is that a safe, I've never noticed that door before, is that a safe door? Yes, it's the very first ever original vault for City Hall. And they store water records in there and the really ancient assessing maps from like the eighteen hundreds are in there squashed under boxes and boxes of stuff. But yes, um, it's a very cool door.
That is a very cool door, yeah.
There's another one way downstairs in the, in the bowels of City Hall, it's very cool.
Wow.
Yeah.
Looks, looks like we're in business.
Yes. Hi Joe, hi Raylene.
Hello.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, so we have quorum, so I think we can get going, so I would like to call the, the Berry City Planning Commission meeting Thursday, uh, July twenty-fifth, order. And our first order of business is, are there any adjustments to the agenda? If not, you can go on to, uh, public comment. I'm assuming there's nobody in the room, other than the two of you. So it seems like there's not, there is no public, so no public comment. And, uh, next item is approval of the minutes from June thirteenth meeting. And those were in your packet, so I'd be happy to accept a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, so been moved, and somebody like to second?
Second.
Okay, Raylene seconded the motion, so, uh, the minute-
I didn't hear who made the motion, sorry, I just wanted to make that for the notes.
Yeah, Becky made, Becky made.
It's a, I think the audio from the room is a little quiet. I had a hard time hearing Becky.
How's that, how's that, is that better?
So, um, before we open the public hearing, I just want to welcome Wendy to the planning commission. And maybe it would be nice if people could briefly introduce themselves and Wendy could have a chance to introduce herself as well, so I'll start, I'm, I'm David Sickle. I've been on the planning commission for a long, long time. And, um, it's always been interesting, uh, I'm retired, but I worked at the, in local government. And particularly at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns for thirty years. So I've been involved in, in local government for my whole career, and very early in my career, I was a, a municipal planner in Ohio. So there's my factoids, um, Becky, do you want to go next?
I can, I think we, do we need to vote to approve the minutes? Okay, I just wanted-
I'm sorry, we do. How about we do that first?
Okay.
We add a motion and a second, uh, to approve the minutes, all in favor, uh, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes are approved, now we can get back to introductions.
Perfect, uh, my name is Becky Wig, I've been on the planning commission, I think for two years, maybe?
Yep.
Yeah, sounds right, um, for about two years, um. I work for a nonprofit that does climate and clean energy policy, um, and I've been here in Berry for about four years.
Uh, Joe?
Hey, yeah, my name is Joe Real, I've been on a little, probably a few months less than, a few months shorter than Becky, I think I started a little bit after she did. Um, and I, this is kind of my first, um, sort of experiments, experience with, with city government. Um, is that, you know, as being on this committee. Um, professionally, I've been in, I was in publishing for a long time and I'm currently working for the state of Vermont. Um, supporting some health, healthcare stuff.
And Raylene?
Hi, I'm Raylene Minier, sorry, I don't have my camera on. If, um, my son is also doing a Zoom meeting at the same time, he's been in his quite a bit. And, um, if I turn my computer, uh, camera on, he loses everything, so we're going with just this for now. But, um, my name is Raylene Minier, I, I own a business in the city, I produce and co-host a local podcast. And I was born and raised in the city, I do, uh, live in the town now, but, uh, absolutely have a, a great love of the city and am happy to be aboard here.
And Wendy, could you give yourself, give us a brief, brief introduction?
Sure, um, nice to meet all of you, um, I'm Wendy Ducey, I'm originally from Maine. I moved to Vermont, let's see, about twenty-three years ago when I went to Norwich. Um, I graduated from there and when I graduated, I lived in Waterbury for a brief time, and then moved to Berry in two thousand and ten. Um, worked for the agency of transportation for sixteen and a half years now. Um, so I plan to, um, spend my career there, um, until retirement. Um, the reason why I wanted to join planning commi- um, commission was because, um, in working with the state, for the state, and just re- reaching out, helping the citizens and being a steward of the taxpayers' dollars. I really wanted to, um, help promote and improve our city. Um, I've lived here for, since two thousand and ten, so fourteen years, and I haven't had a lot of community involvement yet. Um, I've been pretty busy with my career and personal life, so I wanted to, um, just expand on that. I felt like I had, it was the right time to try to do something to help and I just, you know, I want to see a better city. So, um, I, um, wanted to volunteer, I'm excited to be here.
We're, we're glad to have you here, and we now have a fully, um, full planning commission, so that's great. Uh, so maybe we can move on to the public hearing now, so this is a public hearing, uh, which I'll open, which is about proposed flood hazard regulations. Uh, you have a copy of, of the proposed changes in your packet, and we've discussed these before. Um, I don't think anybody's from the public here, but, is here, but, um, there is a letter included, uh, an email that Janet included from, from Ned Swanberg, uh, talking about a definition of, um, substantial improvement. And the def- we don't really have a definition in the language that I see, uh, though he said that what we have does comply. Uh, but I guess question is whether we might want to make an amendment to include a definition, uh, or not, before we send this on to city council. I kind of assume if we make an amendment during the hearing, that that doesn't require another hearing, it's just something we can do and, and that's what we would send on to the city council, but I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts. Um. So I'll, I'll just open the floor if anybody has any thoughts about, about the definition and whether, uh, it's something we might want to include in the language. Yeah, Janet?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, um, the section. Um, you're right, we don't really have a great place for a definition, but substantial improvement as defined is that five point oh one applicability, where it says substantial improvement means. Um, and I'm certainly not opposed to adding the, the definition to the back of the ordinance if that's what folks think is a good idea, I'm gonna look right now to see if we have one, but I don't think we do. I think it reflects back to section five oh one.
I mean, the, the plus of adding a definition is it's very specific. Uh, the minus is also it's very specific, because, uh, it adds, adds up some numbers over a period of time, which might make it harder for somebody, uh, to, to rehab a building, and a great example is we had a flood last year. Somebody put money in last year and they put it in again this year, all of a sudden they might have substantial damage. And then that's maybe the intent of the definition, but it also means that people who fix up their houses and would like to do that again might find that all of a sudden they have a whole bunch of new rules they have to comply with.
So they are, you have to comply with that cumulative, because that's FEMA's minimum, remember our rules are really old.
Yeah.
But I think, I agree with David in that it, it can strengthen, um, it certainly doesn't hurt by adding the definition. And in the rules, by the way, it does say, if you look up substantial improvement on page forty-six of the flood hazard rules, it says C-section five point oh one. So. I think having it in both places, uh, would not hurt at all, that's my opinion.
We need, the, I mean, the, the intention of this is to not keep spending money over and over to repair someplace that's going to flood regularly, that's the intention of it. The downside of it is, it prevents people who might not have any other options from doing that. So kind of, you, you, you can't really win either way, there's flooding. I don't know if anyone else has some thoughts about what we might want to do? Well, I think Janet, you're recommending that maybe we want to add that definition, uh, somewhere in the document.
Yep, I think the best place where it is, uh, where it says section eleven definitions, uh, which is at the end of the flood hazard regulations, and rather than have it reflect back to, uh, section five oh one, we can say substantial improvement means all of this, and see also section five oh one. That would be my recommendation to the commission.
And do people think that's a reasonable way to go? I mean, it certainly lines things up with FEMA and, and what state's looking at. And if they were ever doing funding, I would assume they would look at that definition for their own purposes.
It makes sense, align with what they have, considering we just had two floods right in a row, so I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
It provides clarity, like you said.
Yeah, you know, this will go to city council, so if they kind of weigh things and say, well, we don't want to hamper people because of the idea of floods, they could, they could, they could take the definition out, I'm not sure they could change it because it complies with the, the federal stuff, but they could just be silent on it. Like, I, I kind of agree with Janet, if you're silent on it, somebody's still going to interpret it at some point. If there's a request for funding or permitting, because you have to. And this is probably what you're gonna find, but people will say, well, where did you get that from? So it's probably better to include it, since it's going to be applicable anyhow.
That's kind of what I'm thinking too, it seems better to have it there and be as clear as possible.
So Janet, if, if, if somebody made a mo- if we made it, passed a motion to incorporate that in what we send to city council, you would be able to do that and, and send the, send the revised thing on to city council with that definition added?
Yes, provided everyone else is okay with the changes we've talked about a couple of times now, so, um, yes. That's very simple to make that amendment.
Can I clarify, so we're talking about adding two definitions, substantial improvement and then substantial damage? No?
Just substantial improvement.
Which is that whole paragraph?
Yep.
Okay.
Which we have to meet the state standards. Ned was just telling us that this is what the state language is.
Yeah.
What we're changing is okay with him and passes the test.
Yeah.
But he wanted us to see what is the whole state language, and, and that's why we're talking about adding it as a definition to our regulations.
Okay, so we're talking, like I have those open, it's the fifth, number fifty under the definition section? We're adding a de- that definition to that spot?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Joe has made a motion, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, and Wendy seconded the motion, so is there any further discussion anyone has? If not, we can vote on the motion, uh, so all in favor of adopting the motion, adding, adding this definition of, um, substantial improvement to the language, uh, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have unanimously approved that change. Is there anything else in the public hearing that we need to discuss? And is there anything else in the, in the proposed language that anybody has questions about or, or thoughts about? If not, I think the process is, do we have to adopt these changes and then, uh, close the hearing?
Uh, I believe your motion is to recommend these changes to city council for per first reading and public hearing. So you're recommending this revised language to the city council?
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Wendy moved, and is there a second?
That was Becky.
Oh, Becky, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, and Raylene seconded, and is there any further discussion? If not, then, uh, all in favor of making that recommendation to city council, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, so we have unanimously agreed to that. That rec- this recommendation to city council, and with that, I think we can close the public hearing and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is old business. And the first item is, um, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Actions Table and Staffing and Funding Table, which also are in the packet.
Yes.
And maybe Janet can speak to these a bit, I have a few comments, but they're mostly clerical than, more than anything else.
Excellent, okay, so if you recall at our last meeting, we were gonna have a subcommittee, um, that didn't happen. So I took the liberty of filling out this table, uh, to the best of my ability with regional planning. The consultant assigned to helping us update the plan. Um, and it is, uh, we need to talk about it just to make sure that somebody else from the public has put their eyes on this table. Um, so, we, it, like I said, it's all filled in, and if I'm talking too fast, please let me know. Um, it's about the priorities and what we think is, uh, more important. So we could start with, um, of course, the big table is the mitigation actions, right? So rather than go line by line, I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at this, since I didn't get it out to you folks until Monday night. Um, but think about from our flooding, where we flooded, what you've seen, what some of you have experienced. We need to make some more priorities, which will help in strengthening getting funds ultimately, uh, and get our, our plan passed. Um, it talks about, um, so for example, update the road erosion and cover inventory. Is that a life safety issue? Not the inventory itself, that's why it gets a zero. Um, is it a, uh, a, a property protection thing? Absolutely, so it's highly effective. So this table for one, two, three, four, five, six, the first six columns are all about, does it affect people or are you neutral on it? So that's the difference between the ones and zeros. And probably the easiest thing to do is, is to take a couple of minutes, for any of you who have not had a chance to look at it, to maybe see where there are zeros and if that means anything, like are you concerned that that's not a one? Um, so for example, or a minus one. Um, increase, so the third line, increased regulation on stormwater runoff from neighboring communities. We think it's a property protection, right, so that got a one. Is it a life safety issue? Uh, the consultant and I didn't think that, that was more of a neutral feeling. Is it a political action? We felt it was the other end of the spectrum, that's why it got a minus one. Um, so I don't know if you want to take a few minutes yourselves, or everybody has, or if it would be easier for, for anyone to just ask questions and make comments. I am open to either. But it all adds up to a score, and then, uh, we, it's about importance and where we put it on the table.
No, I would, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just had a question before we start, however, everyone wants to review it, um. I, I did watch the previous planning meeting, so I, I knew that this was gonna happen and was understanding like what it was about. I guess just, um, one of the questions I had that maybe I missed somewhere is that, um, these, the, I, I was just wondering two things, one was where these items, like where the list came from? And then, like, who identified the items, and then my second question with that was, um, what comes after these, because I noticed in the list, there's a lot of, um, fours, fives and sixes. And I was thinking in terms of priority, how we, do we then need to prioritize the fours, fives and sixes?
Great questions Wendy, thank you for that. So the green highlighted headings for each of the subsets comes from the state plan. So we have to respond to the state and FEMA asking us, what are we gonna do about inundation flooding? What are we gonna do about snow? What are we gonna do about ice? And these questions have come out of the consultant's work and, uh, their, their planning document from FEMA as to how and what should be in a plan. So that's, that's the first part, so everything on the left side, which asks all the questions, is a combination of consultant work and requirements.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is this table will actually be in our hazard mitigation plan. It's required to physically sit in the plan on some pages, because there's narratives that go along with it, like how the city deals with ice, how does the city deal with inundation flooding, right? Um, and what was the last part you asked?
Um, so the sec- that answers my first question perfectly, thank you for that. And then the second piece was, I noticed there was a lot of, um, what ended up being in the benefit score, um, fours, fives and sixes, a lot of them, kind of across the board, so it just made me wonder, question, um, do we then have to prioritize the fours, fives and sixes?
Sure, um, that, so the answer is that kind of occurs naturally when we look at the next table that talks about the funding part of it, and are each of these tasks going to get lumped together, say in one project? So like three from this subsection, two from here, become one big project and how is it funded?
Okay.
The nature of, as it accumulates, as you figure it out, a lot of fives and sixes, um, the, the funding tells the tale.
Okay. Thank you for answering that.
Yeah, could you speak to the estimated cost and what is the, how does, what is the range of that? And where did you come up with the, those, so some of these things are incredibly expensive.
Yes, they are, very expensive, um, so are you talking about the next table, David?
Well, no, I'm talking about, um, you know, you have an estimated cost, um, of, you know, of write all these different things on the list, which seems to go from one to three as best I can tell.
Correct.
But I don't know what one to three represents.
Sure, so, uh, one means less than fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Two means fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, and the threes are more than a hundred thousand.
Okay.
So you are a hundred percent correct, these are, these are always expensive.
So, so we're not distinguishing between a hundred fifty thousand and ten million dollars for costs on this?
Right, we know if it's more than a hundred, it's, it's a big ticket item. Which most of them-
Yeah, because some of them are much bigger tickets than others, but they're all in that same bucket, which, you know, in a way, the cost benefit is a little bit deceptive in that sense.
Yes.
So I don't know if that's your definitions, or if that's the definitions that we were given to work with?
Those were the definitions given to work with, the latter of the two.
What it does is it biases towards saying a lot of things, there's a cost benefit plus to doing them. But when the numbers are there, that might not be the case. And, you know, an example that I would give, um, because it relates to housing, is requiring, uh, electric lines to be buried in new development. And that becomes a responsibility of the developer, but that adds to the cost of the lot, which adds to the cost of the house, which makes it less affordable, and if we're struggling with affordable housing, uh, is that really something we should be prioritizing? You know, I, I just as an example of my thought process, when I, I looked at these things, you know, that one jumped out just because I know it would add, you know, thousands of dollars to the cost of a, of a new house, new construction.
Could I ask a question? Along those lines, this is gonna go into a plan.
Mm-hmm.
Are we under an obligation to do all the things in the plan, or is this just like many other plans? Where it's like, it's the plan, it's the things we should do, but the things we should do meet reality of resources, time, all those things?
Great question, the latter of the two.
Okay.
It's a planning document that we aspire to tackle some of these, um, we recognize they're big items. We recognize we have a long list of things we want to do, um, but they want to see that we're thinking about everything.
Yeah.
Okay, and in reality sake, what can we accomplish in five years?
Would, would I assume that part of this process is that when you have these things in the plan and then you apply for a grant, that it gives you some, some leverage for the grant? Because it's in your plan as opposed to just kind of come up with all these, this random list of stuff? Is that, that kind of the purpose of it is, as much as anything to help leverage funding for, for doing these things? There's a lot of the action, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the items are, are shown to be funded by, by grants.
Correct. Um, having them on a list certainly strengthens any grant application, because it means we as the public, we as the city government, we've thought about some of these projects, for sure.
And then another question, as we, it, it, this, this, from what you said at the beginning, we're sort of being used as the public to react to this a little bit. So this ultimately becomes a city council plan to adopt, and we're just providing public input or comment. And we're just providing public input or comment, I guess. Is that, that's kind of the purpose is this is one of the sources of of public input?
It is. Um by you, you folks looking this over and feeling like. You can uh pass it on as best you can. At the August sixth public hearing, when it gets presented to city council. Um it goes out for a thirty day public comment. So you are the first, you're the second step in all of this, right? So it was the staff putting it together, you the first round of public folks looking at it, thinking, okay, this makes sense. Then there's the public, the the entire public comment period for the whole entire plan. So this will be in there.
Uh add one more comment, which is clerical is um in the second part with with the actions and who does it and the funding. Uh anywhere it says city administrator, I should say city manager.
Oh, good point. And planning needs my office, so uh I've asked uh the consultant to clarify that.
Yeah. But some of the things that appear in planning are things that. That the planning commission will prob- would probably be involved in.
Yes.
But a lot of these things are are, you know, other, other players.
Correct. Planning in general falls to the commission, so we could, we can hire consultants to do some of this work. Uh underneath the commission's auspices, sure.
And can I ask? I know you said this is a plan. Do we have to plan for all of these things to happen in a five year period? Cuz that also just seems. Unrealistic, like eh can we do, is there an option to say like? These are the, we think these are the most important things or the most impactful things and say like to prioritize those or is this like? Everything's on the table and we have to try to do all the things?
Again, great question. It's the latter of the two. It's following the template that uh the state puts out that says, this is what your plan needs to do.
Okay.
Is it an absolutely um ambitious goal to get all these done? Yes, it always is. If you look at the last two plans, they were very ambitious. And in fact, one of the things that was on the twenty oh seven plan is just now maybe gonna get legs and happen. So some of these sit on, these lists sit on there for tens of years and then something might happen, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another question on elevating roads above base flood elevation to maintain dry access. Sounds like a wonderful thing, but there's another side to that, which is if you raise those roads. It's gonna change where the floodwater goes cuz it doesn't make floodwater go away, it redirects it. And you know, that's the engineering question, but you know, so is that a, you know, just like, like burying. Power lines might be good, but it has a a counter side too, that's, that's not really part of the cost benefit analysis here.
Yeah, I I totally agree. Um I can ask the consultant if there are some that we could potentially just say. This is, this is a ridiculous goal to try to meet. Can we just nix that one? And I can absolutely ask that question.
I was thinking the same on some of the elevate, elevate roads and even the Berlin Street Bridge, it seemed like. I agree with what David he said, um and that, that would be really expensive, so I would be. I mean, and then there's other impacts too because. Of how it ties into the existing structures and all of that, so. Um in infrastructure, so I was just with the water and sewer and I just. I had a lot of questions around the cost of those. Um but I did have a question too on that section and the inundation, inundation flooding. Um when you look at the priority list versus the. The um. Like who would be the second, the second list of those? It seems like some of those are missing off that list. So I was wondering if they were intended to be exactly the same or through the priority were some intentionally left off or? Is that um just an error?
Um I left that to the consultant, so I honestly can't speak to that.
Okay.
Accumulation of all these lists. Um if something is glaringly obvious that you've noticed. And you wanna say something tonight, I most absolutely will, you know, I can let him know tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, it seems like it cut it off. If you look at the second table with the dates and the uh funding sources. It seemed like it ended at install river gauge by prospects, Prospect Street Bridge. And then it left the three under it off. The dry floodproofing, um install floodgates and the elevate Route three oh two. Um and I felt like there was another one I saw from the middle of the list, but. Now I can't seem to find it, so it may have just been those three, but I don't know if it got cut off in the table. Do you see what I mean? Like right above the snow section?
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, page two of the second of the funding table.
Yeah, I see, just didn't add those last three lines.
If you look at what's on that list compared to what's on the list in the previous table.
Yeah, compared to page two on the other list.
Yeah.
Well, and then I'm not sure if it was just those. Well, I did see that floodproof downtown businesses was on here twice, so that makes sense. They may took that off. For the sec- oh no, they left that one on, I guess.
Uh probably under a different type of flooding.
Yeah.
Under a different category.
Okay.
But um you, you both, all of you raised a really good question, like for example. Um on page three, we talk about high winds. Bury power lines, update zoning to require new subdivision development to bury power lines. The, we already require anything new in the downtown has to be buried. But is that really, as David would say, fiscally responsible on our part to require such a thing? And is this something we really think is a goal that needs to occur in our plan? Um you as the commission who are in charge of, you know, zoning in the municipal plan. Um that is a, that is a huge goal. There's going to be a brand new development, Prospect Heights in the next, I'd say. One to five years is gonna get started. Are we really gonna make that development? Have everything underground? Does that make sense?
It'd be much more expensive. It'll just add, add substantial cost, which makes the houses that are built less affordable. When we're worrying about affordability, that just seems like, like uh something that maybe we don't need to. Have there just now. Just like elevating roads again is is has some consequences that aren't. Aren't here, elevating Route three oh two when there's all this water. Um or, you know, elevating uh where Maple and Main Street meet, where Pier Hotel is. Aren't necessarily, they sound good, but but they might have some, some dire consequences for others.
So do you wanna run through the second table relatively fast uh with all of you to say this makes sense? No, we don't think this should be in the table. And then I could take that back to the consultant because of your feedback? Does that make sense? It won't take very long.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so let's start with fluvial erosion. Update road erosion and culvert inventories. We always need to do that, right? That is done by the regional planning commission for all twenty-three member towns. Um and that's really important. That's how we figure out based on what happens with flooding. Who needs to upsize their culverts, even driveway culverts. So that's a good thing. The next one. I was surprised at this one because I thought we ought to have a permanent one found in the public safety building. The public safety building is not in the flood plain, but it has now flooded. And we anticipate it to flood going forward. So using their conference room. Between the police side and the fire side, it sits right in the middle. Does that make sense? Should we find a new place? We're not married to to having to find a new E O C. But it's probably something that we could say, yep, we studied it, it didn't make sense, couldn't find a location, done, right? So this doesn't mean it's it's an actual project and we have to find a new location. We just kinda have to study it and say, we the city, we anyone else, any other named partners, does it make sense to keep this on the list?
I think it makes sense to look into it.
Right. Um I believe the Cobble Hill Water Main needs to get buried. Public Works works on those things. I don't see anything under fluvial erosion that that um is a head scratcher for me. Um rain gardens, the last item is certainly an educational piece. We can always do more education on rain gardens, right? Um so I'm okay with the the fluvial erosion table if you folks are.
Anyone?
Go to uh inundation flooding, I think this is where we started to wonder, does this really make sense? To, to have an actual study? Does it make sense to really try to accomplish some of these? Let's see.
What can I ask about developing fuel retailers ordinance for anchoring fuel and propane tanks? Did we just do that in this proposed ordinance?
Yeah, we kinda did. Um and what Michelle and I in my office have talked about is, once this passes, is to put together. Like a, a, an informational sheet and send it to all the fuel dealers. And say, the next time you go have to replace a tank or put in a new tank, these are the rules and this is what we expect. Uh so it's, it's an educational piece for sure. Um as far as an ordinance, I can't believe that it would be a separate ordinance. Um I've I've seen ordinances like this in the past. This would be, um this particular thing came out of adding something in the. The administration section of the city ordinance.
Well, might be worth showing the consultant the language for the flood hazard. Things that require those tanks to be, to be anchored and maybe, maybe that's. Maybe that accomplishes the goal and maybe they're suggesting something more, more broadly.
Okay. Uh next. I know uh people wonder about elevating Berlin Street Bridge. We've been talking about elevating Berlin Street Bridge ever since I started here. Almost thirteen years ago. Berlin, between the Willie Street Bridge and the Berlin Street Bridge, they're great catchalls. Um and we caught a lot of debris again under the Berlin Street Bridge two weeks ago. Um so I personally would like to see this on the table. Because that way, we as we continue to talk to um A O T about bridges and and what changes need to be made, it's it's on a list. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and the railroad trestle is another one that caught a lot of stuff, I gather. You know, listening to the hearings and meetings, those two bridges and that railroad trestle were the. Like a top of the list things, it seemed. And then figuring out, figuring out how you can clean out the river in a responsible way. For things that have accumulated. And I don't even know if that's in here.
So is the trestle number three oh eight, is that the trestle bridge in question?
Yes, the one behind R K Miles.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, I mean, the the timbers are all damaged. I I walked and took pictures the next day. I couldn't believe it. But we're not, we're not necessarily catching attention anymore on our desire to see this trestle be removed. So we just have to keep, keep after the, our desires to see it go.
So what is not here in the list is, is, you know, some people suggest dredging and others say, well, that's not a good idea. But there seems to be a middle ground, which is where there can be a responsible way to remove some things from the river without just dredging it. Uh because a lot of stuff has run into the river and and so maybe that's something that could be added here is, is. You know, I don't know if it would be a hydrologic study or things about how to. How to responsibly uh maintain the river flow.
Yeah, I think that's worth looking at. I think. The distinction, I I'm not sort of an expert in this stuff, but the distinction I've heard is that dredging is kind of a specific thing. Um you know, making it deeper where he has like cleaning up. Sort of, I don't wanna say artificial, but sort of debris that's sort of not normally part of it is sort of a separate thing. And I know actual dredging is really controversial, but the latter is cleaning up debris is definitely.
Yeah.
Is definitely worth looking at.
But I, you know, I think the state has hydrologists who, who would, you know, who would say. That dredging is not a good idea, but generally, but there are areas and places where that's exactly.
It could be, yeah. And I recall there was a meeting at city council, I didn't watch it. Where they had someone come in and talk about some of that stuff.
Exactly. So it just seems it should be on the list for study and, and, you know, as a plan, because it's something people bring up. Something the city should, should be addressing and try to have some answers about what's the right way to go about it and what's the wrong way to go about it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I've heard a lot of. Um folks talk about it and trying to understand it more. And I know that the state definitely has specialists in this area who know uh are, they're experts in pieces of it and. I just think, understanding the full impact, and I do think there's different things you can do, like removing debris versus. Removing, like making it bigger, right? And what the other impacts are, so. I think leaving or adding it to the list, I guess, would be good. Um the other thing I was thinking of too, kinda in that realm is a lot of these are. And David, you kind of spoke to this earlier, a lot of these are things to stop the water. But it's that the water still has to go somewhere. So I was curious about, and maybe it's on another part of the list, but I don't recall. Um about maybe creating like another flood plain area or something like that. Looking into possibilities for that or like the Brook Street intervention like that, I feel like has been working really well. Because it has been catching a lot of debris, so I didn't know if something like that could be an opportunity maybe to explore.
Yeah, that's a good point because the city's looking at buyouts with exactly that in mind, which is. Considering buying out where they can get a group of properties and they can do something that, that would help manage the flood plain. Um so the machine shop on Granite Street is on that list and I think Brook Street has a bunch of. Stuff, so maybe that should be in there. The city's well along on thinking that through.
It seems to be added to this list if, or is it kind of? Or I guess this goes into the flood hazard mitigation plan, right? So I guess it could be added in after, right? Maybe?
Oh, you're, you're not hearing you, Janet.
It like stopped picking up our microphone.
Oh, yeah.
Can you hear us?
Well, you, we lost you when you were facing the other direction.
Oh, sorry.
It is still pretty quiet. I mean, I can make you out, but it's a little bit of a struggle sometimes.
Um well, I wonder if it would help if I changed the microphone. Is that better?
Yeah, I think if you're closer, it's better.
Okay, we'll just have to move the mic. Um uh what was I saying? I think it's a great idea to add these to the list. Um because they're part of what, what we're talking about now after. Two annual floods over how many other floods we've had, right? Um so I'm going to talk to the consultant about adding the two things that you folks have already. Um, so I'm going to talk to the consultant about adding the two things that you folks have already said for sure.
And I'll just observe that it seems like there's two things on here that are kind of like. Counter to each other. One is to elevate structures to base flood elevation. And then another is to remove existing structures from flood prone areas. And I think those are both aimed at mitigating the damage from flooding. And I guess my question is, is it okay to have those, like those seem like options? Some people may elevate some, you know, like some things may go away. And is that an okay thing to do, like to have? Just have options in here that we're considering.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that's sort of the, that's sort of the question of buyouts and what, where is it appropriate to buy out? A group of properties in a floodway and where is it appropriate to try to get grants to? Raise, you know, raise raise structures. Above flood elevation in areas that maybe aren't in the floodway but are in the floodplain. So they both, they both could be things and they're both part of that whole idea of of addressing the. Floodplain by strategic buyouts.
I can tell you that, uh. The unmaintained dams, there are three of them here in Berry City. We have a grant, uh, the Friends of Winuski actually obtained. And, uh, they actually, uh, they're gonna do this for us. So that'll be be done, but because it's not done yet, it stays on the list. So. Uh, was there anything about inundation flooding? Anything else that came to mind from anybody? Anything else that you just really weren't sure about? If not, we can move on to snow. Again, bury power lines. That's a. That would be asking Green Mountain Power to bury all of our power lines. Is it worthy of leaving on our list? Maybe, I don't know.
Well, you know, you could make it a little more digestible by saying bury power lines. In critical areas or some something. Or vulnerable areas. So it's not burying every power line, but if there's a place where the power lines. Go down three times a year. Maybe that would be a place to look at burying them instead of continually having to redo them.
Right.
I I don't know if that would help. Be a little more specific.
I think, uh, I think adding, uh, the rest of that phrase is a great suggestion. Um, do you folks lose power here in Berry City when it's storming?
Not very often and not very long. At least we don't.
I lose it all the time, but.
We do.
Occasionally.
We do, because trees come off Beckley Hill. I live on Perrin Street, so it it. Not all the time, but when we lose it, it's usually for a while.
But that, you know, that would be the kind of location where you might want to bury the lines. Where where it's a. It's a repetitive problem and it's severe. Versus i- i- in right in town at our house, yeah, the power goes out occasionally. Usually it comes on again within five minutes. Sometimes. It's an hour or two, but we've, since we've lived here for, in this house for. Twenty plus years, we've never had an extended, really extended. Power outage. So it really should not just be about aesthetics or something like that for for this kind of plan.
Uh, so I'm going to suggest adding very power lines in critical or vulnerable areas. Rather than just very power lines. All right, uh, moving on to ice. Is there anything that caught your attention about ice? Of course, ice, we get ice flooding, but ice in general. Uh, again, at the top of page three, I will, in critical or vulnerable areas.
So can I ask a question about ice? Why is educating homeowners on the importance of carbon monoxide monitors and alarms part of the ice and snow?
That's a great question. I don't know that that's supposed to be there.
But it's in both snow and ice.
Maybe because if it built up like by the vents or something.
I don't know, I'm just. Asking why I don't, I'm not saying it's wrong or right. I don't know.
I mean, that's. I think that's part of it and also just the fact that that's just, that's just more of an issue in the winter because. Most people don't run heating systems in the summer unless they have. Unless their water is tied to it.
Well, I will ask and and see what he has to say, but that certainly makes sense from what you've you've all, uh, deduced. Uh, so under high winds then. Top of page three. How are you feeling about, uh, what he put in update zoning ordinance to require new subdivision development to bury power lines? You want to try to remove that? I mean, we have a real subdivision development that's gonna happen in this city. We have a couple actually that are gonna happen.
I I would try to remove that for now. Doesn't mean it can't come in later, but and the very power lines, you know, should be reflective of the same language that was above.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to remove the middle one. I I wonder why this is here.
I understand the uh smoke detectors and carbon monoxide a little better in that one.
One of the things it made me think of was last summer when we were getting a lot of the for air quality. From the wildfires and other places. And the one thing I could see being on here, I didn't see. Was the public education campaign on fire permits and possible handouts. I was thinking maybe even something about. Air quality, but I don't know that we necessarily need that either because I feel like the weather. And other folks do that anyway.
We could educate, we could, well, not that I'm volunteering, but we could. I could see what he thought about Wendy about coming up with, as you say, uh, some kind of a. A campaign to educate people on air quality and. Why you do certain things, why you close your windows or pay attention to your weatherman. I can see if there's a a viable line item we could come up with to put in there for sure.
Okay. I just feel like, you know, you hear about it this year, we're, there's a lot of wildfires. This year as well, so we'll probably get the same thing at some point, I would imagine.
Good suggestion. Well, you make me think, what what else did we think about when we had, you know, a week of smoke that sat over the city? And that that weird layer of smoky fog that came from hundreds of miles away. Besides air quality, breathing, check on your neighbors, there's all kinds of stuff, right? That probably could tie into your your suggested campaign. Okay. Um, how about landslides? Anything that jumps out or does it make sense here?
Yeah, I think maybe could add something about monitoring, uh, known. Uh, landslide risk areas. Because the city's identified quite a few of those from the last flood, so. Uh, I write ongoing monitoring, which city is, I think, doing. Um, you know, might be a good thing to add.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. Um, and a funding source probably would just be, um, city budget. That wouldn't be something you'd be like a one and done grant.
Well, could be city budget and it could be state geologist.
Yeah.
I was gonna suggest that. I mean, even at B Trans, we have geologists specific for. Slides and um rock slopes and I know that we experienced. With the warmer winters and a lot of freeze thaw cycles that it was. A lot more movement and different movement than we typically have seen. So I would think with their expertise, they would be able to provide a lot of assistance to the municipalities.
See about adding that, thank you. That probably ties into that second line item, maybe expand it ra- rather than just. Um, study one place and landslide potential is expand it more generically to all the areas, as you've said.
But it's also monitoring them, not just studying once.
Right. Great, good suggestions. Uh, infectious diseases outbreaks, which we experienced. Uh, between Lyme, obviously, and, um. You know, COVID.
Do we have a health officer?
We do, Mr. Fire Marshall.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, he's wearing six hats.
Yeah, a bunch of hats.
Yeah. But education is always, always good.
Yep.
Okay, I'm not hearing any, any, anything on infectious diseases. Um, invasive species. Not so much water here, but more like think about our trees and our shrubs. We have a. A significant amount of our trees in the city are mature now. White tree branches are coming down, people's roofs are getting smashed. Anything on, uh, invasive species? Okay.
What's the, um? I don't know trees very well. I know the Emerald Ash Borer is not here yet, we don't think.
Correct, we don't think.
Is there anything that we should be doing to? Stay in the it's not here stage?
Oh, that's a good question. Outreach and education on invasive pests. And risks of ticks, maybe divide that between ticks who harm animals and people. And invasive pests such as the Emerald Ash Borer, which affects our our trees.
Right, yeah, that could work.
I'll see what he thinks about breaking that middle one into two. And maybe give it some more language. Okay, then, uh, heat. On page four and four, we're almost done. We're making great, great progress. Thank you very much, everybody. Um. So besides installing a backup generator at the Aldrich Library, we always want to put generators in a lot of places. I think the schools are all set. Um. City Hall has an old outdated generator which we could update.
I think those are under all hazards.
Are they? Okay.
Yeah. And with the generator for Spalding High School. I would think you would want to add the school department to that list of layers.
Yep.
And probably for a generator at Aldrich Library, probably want to add Aldrich Library to the. To the list.
Very good, yes. Okay. Um, hot weather planning is usually done out of the fire department and we notify people as we can. Anything else that you folks can think of since we are having hotter, longer summers? Water, what about water consumption? Um, we haven't had people, we haven't the city told you folks here to.
Conserve water.
Right? Has there been any water conservation in the last couple of years? I don't think so. Okay, I think we're so good. So conversely, what about cold weather planning? Um, I'll make the same changes for the Aldrich Library. Add the library to that discussion. And then we jump into drought. Water efficiency. I can't think of anything additional. So we're into the last section, all hazards, which is the catchall for all those other ones. Anything comes to mind, anything that, uh? You have an immediate thought of? As you wander around the city with your mind and and what we do year round?
I have a question. I think just because I'm not familiar enough with all the city buildings per se. Um, is the. Installed backup generators at the town garage? Is the town garage the same? As the Public Works Building or are those two different buildings?
Same building.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, there's really two issues. One is the current building is very outdated and. Not, not really sufficient and. But they need power.
Right.
And the other is they really need a whole new facility.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense.
Different location.
Yeah, that would be part of the planning purposes when we look at some new building for them. Purchase or develop new public works building. It would be part of that planning effort. Okay. That was a heavy lift, but I appreciate everybody's input. I really do. I'm gonna, um, uh, send all of the comments back to the, uh, consultant and, um, like I said. The final, I'm hoping to get my hands on the final draft plan next week. Before it goes to city council, so we as staff can review it one more time and I would be more than happy to share it with all of you. Just to see what a, what a hazard mitigation plan for the city looks like. This one is gonna look very different from the last one. Um. If if you're interested.
Uh.
Oh.
Love to see it, yeah.
So if we're moving on with old business, the next is is our, every meeting we're reviewing a portion of the. Um, the city plan. And this is the economic development portion of it. And I hope everybody's had a chance to read it and. Part of the reason of going through this is. Not that far in the future, we're gonna have to start updating. The city plan. So thought a good place to start was to have all the commissioners had had an opportunity to. Really look at it and have discussions or questions answered about it. Um. So this is, you know, there's a lot of stuff here, but what I, what I was curious about, so I'll start. Is, um, at the end of the plan, so on the very last page of a packet, it sets some benchmarks. For twenty twenty six. So I just went online and did a little research to see how we might be doing relative. To the benchmarks. So I thought I could share some of that with you. Um, so the per capita income target for twenty twenty six was twenty four thousand dollars. But what I found online is the current per capita income in Berry City is thirty three thousand two eighty five. Um. That's not necessarily good, but it it speaks to kind of the way we set benchmarks and how things change over time. Uh, the unemployment rate, the target for twenty twenty six was two point six percent. And our current unemployment rate from what I found online is two point four percent. See, it sounds like we're, everything's good. We don't have to do anything else in Berry, do we? Uh, total number of jobs, I don't think I was able to find that. And, um, the other thing I wasn't able to find was a vacancy rate for the downtown buildings. But the source online I looked at, I think indicated a vacancy rate in general in the city of seven percent. Which probably makes sense, but I know the vacancy rate for. Uh, rental units is probably below two percent. There's, people can't find apartments. And a few other statistics that I thought were worth sharing. Um, is, uh, in city, twenty four point one percent of the. A population is below the poverty line. Um, that the, uh, there's fifty four percent of, uh, hous- housing is renter occupied. You have a much higher proportion of renters than, um. Then the rest of the. than the rest of the county or the rest of the state. So that's why when city council talks about housing, they're often also talking about how do we increase opportunities for home ownership.
What was that percentage? Sorry, I missed that word.
Oh, it's 54%.
Oh, wow.
And I think, but I don't remember exactly because I didn't write it down. But I think in the county and the state, the, you know, that means the owner occupied is 46%. And in a lot of the state, I think owner occupied in a community is more around 70%. 56% of the housing in Berry is multi-unit housing. And the median home value is, and this is I'm sure pretty old Janet, probably has, will laugh at this, but the number I found was 185,000. But comparing that database, the, the median home value in Washington County is 278,000. So again, there's a big disparity in, in the value of housing in Berry compared to other areas in, in Washington County and, and the state. Much, much more affordable, but it's not affordable. And another kind of factoid is the education level in Berry. At 89.6% are high school graduates and 29.6% are college graduates. Just for a kind of frame of reference, in Washington County, 46.2% of adults are college graduates. So again, it just speaks to the, some of the demographics of Berry and, and other parts of the city plan, you know, speak to some of these things. But I was just kind of struck when I looked at the, the benchmarks, how they seem to be met. But that's not necessarily, they're maybe not the right, the right kind of benchmarks. So that was my, my little sermon on this stuff. I don't know if anyone else had any impressions from, from looking through the plan. Are there's things here that have been accomplished and things that haven't?
I was really curious, there was a note that said the revised vacant building and minimum housing standard ordinances would have, it said something like that, that would have an effect on the downtown. And I wonder Janet if, what effect that's had, if, if that's been, that's, I guess, if that's had any effect.
So the vacant building ordinance hasn't, that was updated, I think in 2019 when they raised, the city council raised the fees. And at the time, the code enforcement fire department had an exemption that said if you are actively, if you have a sign and you're actively trying to sell a building, you're exempt from the vacant building ordinance. Well, we all know the one place that doesn't, that, that speaks to everybody and, you know, very passionately is frustrating. That's how they skirt that requirement is by having that sign for sale.
That's why there was that sign in the, in the window.
You know, we talk about how, how can we, how can we get at that building better? The thing is, as you all know, when you strengthen ordinances, you've gotta have enough people to do the enforcement.
Yeah.
And so we do have, from the city attorney, a draft revised vacant building ordinance. But he doesn't really know Berry City like we all know Berry City. So we as staff kind of have to tear it apart while trying to keep the spirit of his suggested changes. So there's that. Councilor Stockwell has been talking to code enforcement about strengthening the minimum housing ordinance, which will, the, the theory is to have, to hold landlords to a higher standard while it's still very difficult. So again, it's a lot of enforcement, it's a lot of education and hoping that they comply. So there is that, we can always revise ordinances, right? We can always hope for a, a better outcome. So I'm always for, you know, re-examining things and what's not working anymore and what can we do that makes sense, so. Just so you folks know, we are, in my office, we're getting ready to do the second round of invoicing for rental housing. And I think by, I'm gonna say November, I could actually be able to give some good hard statistics as to how many, how many units do we have in the city? How many are single-family home? How many are rented? Of the duplexes, how many are owner occupied versus the other side being rented? And we're finding more and more apartments are not being rented because of the folks that, that rent them, destroy them and they don't want the headache anymore. I am fearful we have a lot more vacant apartments that could be filled, that people just don't want to do it anymore. So I, I think trying to strengthen the minimum housing ordinance and giving owners a sense of, of, you know, there's consequences can help. But the tenants do have, they have their, their strengths as well, they have, you know, their advocates, so it's, once you get somebody in, you can't just evict them, right? So I think there's a lot more education and a lot more need out there. But I just, I'm finding that very unfortunate. People come in and now the part of their duplex is empty, so.
You know, even, even places like Downstreet have frustrations with renters who wreck the apartments, so you know, a well-managed, well-staffed organization that manages these things also beats their head against the wall sometimes with, with tenants that are just not, are not, not, not respecting the property. And there are also landlords that don't do anything and charge a lot of rent, so it cuts both ways, but, but it's a, it's a problem of balance. So you know, another thing with, just to add to that, is there are also landlords who are, you know, who manage a bunch of buildings who when they get a tenant like that, it costs them more to go through eviction than to say, "If I give you $3,000, will you move out of here?" And they do that, so they buy the, the tenant out and the stories I hear is there, there are actually people who go from apartment to apartment and never pay rent and then get a few thou-, live there for, free for a few months, don't pay rent and then get paid to go away. And go on to the next place if they can find somebody who's not on to the game. So you know, even, even if they're not tearing up the place, they're not, they're not paying rent either. So landlords, particularly if they just, you know, have a house that they used to own or have a few units, as Janet said, if, if they have one bad experience, they just decide, "I don't need to do this anymore." Costs me more to have it, rent it out than it cost, and maintain it than it costs me to leave it empty. But they're not seeming ready to sell either.
Is there anything, like is there anything within the city's purview to encourage them to sell? Like any ordinances or like things that could be done to discourage just holding on to empty?
I can't think of, I mean, it would be very wrong of us to, you know, come up with some penalty.
Uh, yeah, I'm not suggesting a penalty, I guess I'd like, if we have a vacant building ordinance, like is there anything in there that could?
I, I don't think so, yeah. And I've never heard of anything that would, you know, make it so hard that there's, you know, we're discouraging someone for not filling their apartment that they almost feel like they're forced to. And we just encourage, right?
Yeah, I guess I was thinking about if you have a second home that you used to rent and now you're not renting, like could there be any incentive to sell that? Like rather than just sit on it?
Another, Eric.
The, the snowbirds that leave in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's their home.
Yeah, another thing I understand is the challenge is if a house gets foreclosed off and the bank has no, because of the way the mortgages get sold and resold and resold, the bank that's managing it has no incentive to rent it or sell it or do anything to it other than keep the lawn mowed and keep the for-sale sign out maybe, but not really interested in selling it, they just collect fees for having it. So another challenge. The one thing that's in here that, that is access to healthy food and a downtown full-size grocery store. And there was a lot of effort to have the, the, the very co-op formed and that fizzled. AR market is downtown, I think they would say they're a grocery store, but I don't think they're a full-size grocery store. But that's an issue that in the next planning process we'll have to dig into again.
That would definitely be a good thing to encourage, and air is, is, is great for what they are, it's just not quite the same thing.
Yeah. But it's just something that was, you know, a big thing in this and, and, and now it's kind of back to square one.
It would be nice to have one downtown. For a lot of reasons.
Yeah.
There is a new grocery type store going in down near Tally. That's like a, I don't know, for lack of better term, the crash and dent store. But they are saying that they will have some dairy products and other things as well. But that's, that's what that store is going in.
You know, that's been in the works for a while, hasn't it?
It has, and I, I have seen that they're loading some stuff in there actually and the shelving is in there and they're starting to put stuff in there, so hopefully that will be coming open soon.
Yeah, and we seem to have breakfast in downtown again.
Yes, very much excited about that.
Well, that's a, that's a good downtown improvement. It seems like there's several breakfasts sort of places now showing up. I think Simply Subs is doing that.
We have breakfast as well.
Yep, Simply Subs, Subway does breakfast.
Anything, anything else about in this that people saw as they read through?
I was curious, the plan indicated that there's still capacity in our water and sewer system, is that still the case?
Yes.
Another challenge that, you know, continues is reputation and perception. So Berry still sort of has that scary Berry moniker that goes with it, which is a challenge. Another thing I think might be a challenge is, I think the city is pretty receptive from a regulatory perspective and planning and zoning to sit down with potential property developers and all. But I don't know that that's the impression out in the world. I think that's partly because a lot of times people make plans and don't come in to talk to planning and zoning till they're well into their plan, at which point they don't like what they hear. Whereas if they had come and talked about it at the beginning, they would have gotten a very friendly reception and they would have been able to just tweak a few things in their planning process and have absolutely no problem getting their plan through. It happens time and again, but then the perception is that it's all this planning and zoning that's, that's, that's inhibiting development. And that is, you know, an impression out in, in the business community and so on. So something to work on.
That's unfortunate because it sounds like you're speaking of a specific example. And that just makes me really sad. Because the last thing that I have ever wanted to say is no. And of the people that I have trained over the years, I've said the last thing we say is no. We don't even accept applications and deny them. We say, "No, we don't want your money, you just can't do this." And that just really makes me, that makes me really sad.
Yep, well, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but in, you know, BADC doing strategic planning, that just came up and it's a misperception in the community, I think. And when people get asked for specifics, they don't have them. But it's, it's a, you know, something to just be mindful of and and think, you know, maybe in next time we do the planning, think about ways to overcome that perception.
Or maybe even like, you know, like a FAQ sheet or something around, I don't know if we can do this or not, I'm not familiar enough with it, but like during election voting days, you know, there's the board. When you walk in and there's information on there, but even if there was, you know, public information about the permitting process, like, you know, a lot of people go vote, so maybe they would at least get the information. Maybe that would be worth, you know, maybe people just don't know what it's like, you know?
Well, I know another way is, is, you know, there's, there's the Berry Partnership and Berry Area Development Corporation that work with potential business owners. Sometimes they come in early in the process, sometimes not. But that's another place where you could work on, on working with them to know that one of the first stops they should make with a potential business is, is the city's zone, planning and zoning or the town's planning and zoning department just to take an overview of the plans and, and, and give people some of the guidelines so that they can do it right. Some, you know, some of the people I've talked to said, "Well, I, when I did this stuff, I always was prepared and I never had a problem with permits because I knew the zoning rules as well as the zoning administrator before I brought something in to make sure I was gonna be able to move it through quickly." And you know, others just wait till they've, they've spent a ton of money doing all the planning and then they bring it in and nobody ever looked at, at the rules and, and they, they could have followed the rules and it wouldn't have cost any different, but they, now they've invested the money and they have changed the plans. I'm sure Janet's seen both those things. And I know when I did planning and zoning, I saw both of those things where people who came in prepared and knew, knew the rules or came in early, usually had no problem doing what they wanted to do or, or, or they said that this isn't top for that plan. Whereas if they've invested a lot, then it's just difficult for everybody and you get to deal with very angry people.
I like, working with the partnership is a good idea. Something I was gonna comment on in this section when I was reading it and just thinking about some of the vacant buildings we have downtown. You know, there's some businesses that, like Mr. Z's, for example, they had, they didn't reopen after last summer and that building's been vacant for a year. So I just wonder, you know, we've had two floods back to back. I would imagine if, if we wanted to bring or try to bring, campaign or, you know, promote new business in the city, knowing some of the challenges we've had with the flooding, that could be really a struggle, I feel like, or even homeownership, so. I wonder, maybe that's an opportunity to talk to the partnership as, as well, like how do you market that, you know?
Well, the partnership and BADC both market. And there's, there's, you know, there's been some turnover in businesses, but by and large, there's as many businesses coming in as have gone out.
That's good.
But, but there's some properties that are vacant and they've been vacant for a long time and they're not, they can't be occupied without huge investment. And the owner's not willing to make the investment or sell the property for, for a reasonable price. And those are, are just a problem.
Right.
And then like Mr. Z's, the problem is it's, it's in a pretty bad location for flooding. I don't know if it flooded again this time or not, but I don't know if it flooded again this time or not, but that whole intersection flooded again. So whether that's a good spot for, for a business or not, I don't know, but. That's, that's some of the challenges. I remember reading somebody interviewed Exile on Main Street about flooding last year and asked, you know, if they had a problem and they said no. And the reason why they didn't have a problem is they don't have a basement. So a lot of the downtown businesses have done things, even though they still have a basement and they use it to not use it the same way they used to. Anything else? Well, if not, maybe we should move on. In the agenda because we try to finish around seven, so the next item. Is a new business, which is a confirmation that our next meeting is August eighth. So I'll, I expect we'll hear some back about, um. Some of the, the things we just talked about today. And I think the city council is getting the housing ordinance changes, is that on August sixth?
The housing ordinance?
The, uh, the, the, the interim zoning.
Um, I did not make it in time in the paper, so it'll be on the next one. I, um, I could, I was gonna get, I tried to get it in and it counted only as fourteen days and. Uh, I don't want to not meet the rules and regulations, so I want it to be, I've met the fifteen days and everything. And ACCD has a new, uh, way of recording everything, which I discovered when I was doing this. So it'll be on, uh, if they hold a meeting after August sixth. It'll either be the next week or the week after, so, and remember, that is the one and done, hopefully.
Right. So you'll keep us posted on that.
Do some more prep at the August eighth if we need to.
Okay, uh, are there any staff updates that you have?
I could talk to you folks for hours about what everything we've been doing, but, um, some of the big stuff besides flooding obviously is. Um, more and more people are being told they have, by the state flood plane manager, they have to elevate their structures. Um, they have three years to come into compliance, this is a hard one, people aren't doing it, they don't want to do it. Um, we, I'll use Mr. Z's as an example, um, that building is in the flood zone. Um, permanent equipment is considered part of the structure. So things like those big freezers and big ovens is considered permanent equipment. Uh, all has to be elevated and the, uh, owner just did not want to make an investment. He's, he's tired, he's trying to sell the building, uh, so the next person has to. As we've talked about, recognize the fact that that building has to go up in the air now, so. Um, lots of discussions about buyouts and elevations. We held a Berry Day last Thursday up at the auditorium for the folks on the buyout list. Uh, and we're now talking about trying to, uh, apply for money for elevating structures. Um, lots of residents don't want to be bought out, they want to elevate their structure, so that's a different. Funding source under Vermont Emergency Management, which would require a lot more work on the city's part. Um, but we're talking about that as well. Um, DRB, let's talk about the DRB. Last DRB meeting, a second curb cut in a neighborhood was approved. Which, um, is, was pretty controversial, uh, we think a neighbor is gonna appeal the decision. Um, the upcoming DRB meeting is about. Um, Capital Candy wants to buy the round granite shed that kind of sits in the middle of their parking lot in their buildings. That's called the E L Roundhouse, uh, granite shed, it's a historic structure on the historic register. Uh, so it's Capital Candy's in front of the DRB to, uh, see about demolishing that structure. So it's a big deal to demolish a, a historic structure, so that's what's coming for the DRB. Um, lots of businesses coming and going, as we can see, new owners of the, um. Well, I call it the old townhouse, but seventy-five North Main where Salvation Army was going to go. Now has a new owner, uh, wants to put business in the front on the first floor. Apartments in the back, apartments up above, so there's that. Um, the owner of what we call the old Bell Trammy Building, which was the nail salon on the other side of the. Uh, by, the bike path, not the bike path, the, um, yeah. Between AR Market and, uh, yeah, the walkway. Um, there's, they're still in the planning stages to put an apartment in the back. And put in a second floor with apartments up above. Um, I think I reported last month that, uh, between Downstreet Housing and DEW Construction. They submitted a letter of interest for the Seminary Street Parking Lot. As well as the, uh, what we call the Campbell Place Parking Lot, there used to be a duplex there to develop that. Um, the, the parcel we call the Wabi Park, which is next to, uh, the Public Safety Building. Um, that has gone out for a letter of interest and. It's my understanding Downstreet Housing is also interested in developing that, so there's that that's gonna be going on. Um, lot of development, little development here and there, people are really, you know, putting thought to paper about expanding housing already. And I think once we put through that interim zoning, it will open the doors for. There's a couple folks that own apartment buildings on Highland up off Washington, could very easily reconfigure the inside of their building. And, um, create more apartments within the four walls. So, yeah, there's, I think there's a lot going on, so there, there is all of that. Um, grant funding, there's, there's a lot of grant work going on with the buyouts and the elevations. Uh, with, we were granted, uh, two point eight seven five million dollars from Senator Sanders. For the Prospect Heights, uh, work, so we're working on that grant, grant work. I'm working with the executive director of Berry Area Development on that. Um, we got, uh, I think there was press releases, the city obtained money from. Senator Sanders again for the auditorium as well as, uh, a water transmission main update on Route three oh two. Over three million dollars for the odd and two point two million dollars for the water main. So there's a lot going on, believe it or not, so. We're, we're busy.
Yeah, Prospect Heights got a grant from the, the Northern Borders. Analyst grant, that was the two point eight million, I think. And then Senator Sanders' office actually put in a, a congressional funding request that would cover the balance. Of the estimated cost, if, if that's still correct.
That's what I've heard, but, uh, I haven't seen anything on it.
So anyhow, that's, that's got some legs too, as you mentioned.
Heritage Festival this weekend, something around, go downtown, it's always, it's always a fun time, lots going on.
Okay, uh, the next item is Roundtable, does anybody have anything they want to share? If not.
I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I do want to ask about Summer Street.
Yeah, uh, I'm not connecting well with the consultant, um, hasn't, we got that grant extended.
Oh, we did, okay, good, yeah.
So I just, I just need to find time to talk with him and get that resurrected.
Yeah, okay, and did, uh, we had that other grant that I think we didn't think we'd actually be able to.
Yeah, there's a process, that, that's the one that keeps me up at night, I, um. We didn't get any consultants.
Right, yeah.
So we're running out of time and they won't extend the grant, they don't like to not fund projects. So we're, I'm in this terrible pickle, if I could, I need to review the city's procurement policy. And see if I can find somebody who would at least sit down and go through our regulations and make. At least suggestions to give us an outline.
So the state won't extend the grant and they don't want the money back?
They don't wanna not fund the project, you know, they're like, you got a grant, you said you were gonna do it, why can't you do it? But they will not extend the bylaw modernization grant, they don't push it out. Which I was very sad to hear.
Yeah. Right, right, or if you can't find it, if we can't find a consultant, yeah.
Have you revisited, maybe recalled back some of the consultants that didn't make a proposal, weren't interested before, just to see if. Something might have changed? Anyone have anything else? If not, uh, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Releeding moved, is there a second to the motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Wendy seconded, uh, so all in favor of adjournment, uh, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, so we are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Good night everyone, enjoy your Heritage Festival weekend.
You too, thank you.
Good night all.